All right, good evening. I'd like to call and order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Township of Warminster, Thursday, October 17, 2019. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Frescatore, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would everybody please remain standing for one moment as we remember the men and women who were protecting us both at home and overseas, and also Representative Elijah Cummings, who passed away this morning after a long service to this country. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to the meeting this evening. We're going to get right into the agenda, and our first up is our announcements. Mr. Monroe, joining us by phone tonight does not have any announcements at the opening, so we're going to go right to Ms. Frescatore.
Good evening. I have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Rec Department. We have the incredible Edible Veggie Contest winners. The biggest zucchini, James Lammerow. Eggplant, Jody Allwood. Tomato, Joseph Pugliese. Cucumber, Frank Listner. Congratulations on all the winners. Annual Fall Golf Scramble. Parks and Rec, thank all the sponsors, golfers, and volunteers who made our annual Fall Golf Scramble on Monday a huge success. Couldn't have done it without you. Touch a Truck and Paint the Plow, Saturday, October 26, free to the public, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Warminster Community Park. It's an unforgettable experience with your children, grandkids, young and old can touch, honk, and climb aboard some of the big rigs, construction, and public safety equipment they see on the road every day. Vote for your favorite piece of art, the third annual Paint the Plow contest, sponsored by JP Mascaro and Southampton Warminster Area Lions Club. Babysitting Training, Saturday, October 26, from 9:00 to 3:00 for youths ages 11 to 15. Registration closes on Monday. Family Bird Watch, Saturday, October 26, 7:30 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. Radio City Christmas Spectacular, it's a great show. Fees are $115 for residents, $120 for non-residents. Only 12 tickets are left for the annual trip to Radio City, so if you're interested, jump on it. Discount tickets make great gifts. We have movie tickets year-round for $9.50. It's quite a bargain. We also have the Hometown Hero banners. The Friends of Warminster Parks is pleased to announce the second set of Hometown Hero banners will be installed shortly along Veterans Way. Friends of Warminster Park invite all residents to participate in the Hometown Hero banner program. For information or application for any of these items, please contact the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. McKeever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements. This coming Sunday is the Warminster Historical Society will be having a Warminster History Day at the library between 1:00 and 4:30 p.m. If you're in the neighborhood, please do stop by. The Lost Obe sponsoring a sip and shop at Five Ponds Golf Course on November 9 from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, I have the Centennial Education Foundation has a dueling pianos event coming up on November the 8th at 6:00 p.m. at The Fuge. It's $35 ahead in its cash bar, and the money goes for the Centennial Education Foundation, which does a lot of great work with mini grants for all of our schools and scholarships and alike. And I want to thank our friend Sam Cravero, the owner of The Fuge, who's really gotten involved with CDF, and he's really pushing and helping them with this event. He also helped them with the 50th anniversary of the Apollo 11. Sam was involved in that, too, so I want to thank Sam. It looks like it's going to be a really good event, so that's November the 8th. Also, this coming Friday evening, or Saturday evening, I'm sorry, if you don't have anything going with the family, a great night is at William Tenet High School. It's the 25th anniversary celebration of bands. They have 10 bands scheduled, high school bands scheduled. They come on one after another, starting at 5:00 p.m. I believe it's eight hours for admission, but don't quote me because I don't have a flyer in front of me, but I know it's this Saturday. So take the family out, it's a great, it's really a great night. The only other announcements I have is I have my pink on tonight. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For all you gals out there, please schedule en mammograms. Get it done before the holidays. You'll be glad you did. And I also want to recognize our friend Leo Quinn. It's good to have you back in the room tonight, Leo. Good to see you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McKeever. Mr. McPhillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Saturday, October 26, will be the next National Prescription Medication Take-Back Day. There will be drop-off locations set up all throughout Bucks County from 10:00 to 2:00, and I got to tell you, Bucks County leads the state of Pennsylvania in taking back prescription medications, and that is large part because of townships like here in Warminster, where every day can be a take-back day. Every day you can take back your unwanted, unused prescription medications. I tell you, when I'm out talking with residents, two questions always come up about the drop-off box. One is, Dan, why are you always talking about the drop-off box and the opioid crisis? The answer is simple, because when you consider close to 80% of the people who abuse heroin, start off by abusing painkillers. The same type of painkillers that you can find in your medicine cabinet, same type of painkillers you can find on your kitchen counter. So please, if you have no use for your painkillers, drop them off at the police station. The next announcement is that this Wednesday, October 23, I'll be meeting with township residents at the Warminster Library. So if you can't make one of these meetings and you want to talk to a township supervisor, I'll be at the Warminster Library this coming Wednesday at 7:00.
Dan, I have a quick question. Some folks have asked me about the take-back program. Should they take the labels off their prescriptions when they bring them to the police station?
Kathy, it's a very good question. You don't have to. What I recommend is that at the minimum, just scribble off your name.
Okay.
Because what happens with that is that every day, Police Chief Donnelly and his officers, they take an inventory of what's going on in that green box there, and then every month, I get a report on how many pounds we've taken back that month.
Right.
So to answer your questions, you don't have to, but I recommend that you do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. I only have one announcement, and that was that there was an executive session just prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel, union negotiations, matter of litigations, and potential litigation. And with that, we're going to move right into our presentations this evening. I'd like to invite up Chief Donnelly and Judge Finella as we get to have the honor of swearing in a new officer this evening.
Good evening. How are yous?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
It is my honor to introduce Joe's son, San Spago. Did I say that, Joe? Did I say it right? All right. Joe was born and raised in Doylestown. He attended Nativity Grade of Our Lords in Warminster. He played, went to Archbishop Wood High School, graduated from Archbishop Wood High School, where he played baseball and football for Wood. After attending Wood High School, he went to Mercer County Community College in West Windsor, New Jersey, studied criminal justice. After his stint in Mercer, he went to continue his education at Kutztown University. After leaving Kutztown University, he attended the Montgomery County Police Academy and received his ACT 120, and he was subsequently hired by Lansdowne Borough in Delaware County as a police officer. Joe was vetted by our hiring board and brought in, tested, and passed, and he will be our next police officer. So with that, I'll bring Judge up and Joe up. You're sworn in.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to be here, swearing an officer, okay? Makes me feel safer at home, and I really appreciate all what they do. All of his fellow officers are in the back. They're here to support you, and I'm here to support you, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and we'll see you in the court soon, hopefully. Okay, so, so everybody can see. Left hand, and you, okay, raise your right hand. Okay, so repeat after me. I, Joseph San Spago.
I, Joseph San Spago.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a patrol officer.
Of a patrol officer.
The Warminster Township.
The Warminster Township.
Bucks County.
Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color, sex.
Color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Age, national origin.
Age, national origin.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Congratulations, all San Spago.
My mom, Barbara, and my dad, Scott.
Okay. Who's that, your origins? You've got people.
My friend Ryan, Dan, Mr. McIntyre, my old boss, and Dan Prado.
We wish you well. And thank you very much, Elaine, Ms. Ryan. It's truly a privilege. Okay.
Welcome to Warminster.
Welcome, Joe. Good luck.
Welcome. Thank you. We're going to take a short recess to allow some pictures of the new officer, so. All right, we'll come back from break now, and as the room clears out, we'll give it just a moment. Good. Good. All right.
Saw him today.
Let's get into our agenda, our next presentation we are happy to have with us, our friends from Bucks County YMCA. I'd like to introduce not only Trish and Dylan, but also Supervisor Emeritus Leo Quinn to come on up and let us know what's going on with the Y.
Thank you, Chairman Jason. It's a pleasure to be in front of the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors. It's been two years since I was here. I missed last year, I was away, and it's my pleasure to talk to the supervisors and the residents of Warminster Township as to what has been going on at the YMCA since we got involved with them as a partner in Warminster Township a number of years ago. And if you recall, part of the, just go back in time as to what was occurring, if you remember, we were given a grant, or verbally provided a grant by Bernie O'Neil, one of our state reps, and we were trying to use that money to build our own rec center. And we did a lot of exhaustive studies. We looked at staying at Joseph Hart Elementary, which was the rec building, and we looked at two other schools that were being taken out of inventory, and we just couldn't get those to work into the model with the township. And when we did the analysis over at WCP, we couldn't get the math to work for the township to build a rec building there at the time. And that's when we decided that it might be a good idea, see if we could partner with the YMCA, since they've been doing this for 150 years, maybe they might know a little bit about how to do this. So I'm here today to introduce to you Trish, who is the COO, and I'm not going to say her last name because I'll butcher it. I don't have any idea. It's a lot easier than the new officer we have, but it's still, it's something I can mess up. And Dylan Friends, who is the Branch Director in Warminster. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Trish, and we'll start the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. So I'll say it. So I'm Trish Feintel, and I am the Chief Operations Officer for YMCA of Bucks County. I do stand here this evening on behalf of our President and CEO, Zane Moore, as well as on behalf of our very dedicated Board of Directors and volunteers like Leo. But before I begin, I just want to say thank you so much to the Township of Warminster, not only for opening up the door and helping us to begin our journey, but for all the support that you have provided. We also want to thank Parks and Rec, as well as the Centennial School District and Board of Ed under Dr. Ball. When I was here, I was actually here three years ago, we were known as Central Bucks. We were the Central Bucks Family YMCA with two branches in Doylestown and Warminster. And I am so proud to say that we are now the YMCA of Bucks County. We are proudly serving over 60,000 participants and members across Bucks County, which looks like five membership branches, six youth education centers, and 10 campsites. But I think what we're most proud of is the fact that we are able to give away over $5 million in community benefit, and $2 million of which is direct financial assistance, which goes to your neighbors across Bucks County, which includes right here in Warminster. The remaining balance of that $5 million goes to what's unique to the YMCA of Bucks County, and that is our pathway programs. So you'll be hearing a lot more about our pathway programs from Dylan, but they are special groups of individuals like our veterans, cancer survivors, or what Dan was speaking to. We just recently started a pathway for those who are working through substance abuse recovery. And actually, we launched it right here in Warminster at our Warminster branch. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up Dylan, who is our, who is our Branch Director, and again, just thank you so much, because every time that we can share our story, that is, that's one more potential donor, one more potential member, partner, that just allows us to sustain and to thrive, and we want to thrive right here in Warminster. So thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you all today on behalf of the Warminster Branch of YMCA of Bucks County. So thanks, Leo, and thanks to Trish for the introduction as well. The YMCA, living our cause, we have three pillars in which we kind of stand upon very firmly within the Y as an organization. That's youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. So youth development is where we're going to begin, and it's October. We had an amazing summer with a partnership at Centennial School District and Willowdale Elementary School in 2019. So 11 weeks of summer camp, the last week concluding in five days of field trips for all 275 students or children who attended Warminster's camp this year. We had 2,587 enrollments. It was a wonderful time across a variety of different camp opportunities, half-day, full-day, three-day care, five-day care, sports, and specialty camps, some of which musical theater would be one of them, a great example. So we wanted to thank our gracious donors as well. Trish spoke a little bit about our ability to impact a community through financial assistance. Here in Warminster, $43,250 was provided so far year-to-date to help offset costs of things like summer camp and programming membership to those individuals. So on our, you can also see here that there's some great photographic examples at the bottom of this slide that depict what this year's summer camp was like. Fishing, it's one of my favorite hobbies, too. So on the next slide, we'll kind of go to our next pillar that we talked about, healthy living. And in our Warminster Branch of YMCA of Bucks County, we have over 2,110 members that have joined our family. And I say "family" from the bottom of my heart. They're an extension of mine, an extension of ours, and it's something that I have a great pleasure to interact with them on a daily basis. Here in Warminster, we operate seven days a week. So Monday through Thursday, we're open from 5:30 in the morning until 10:00 p.m. Fridays, 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Saturdays and Sundays, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. With childcare hours available, two membership types that include youth. So that would be a one adult independence membership, a two adult independence membership, or a youth membership itself. Your membership at the Y includes a multitude of things. One of the things that we grew from in the community here, Warminster Parks and Recreation, is group exercise programming. And we have amazing certified group exercise professionals providing more than 50 different formats to individuals throughout the week, morning and evening, seven days a week. State-of-the-art equipment, and we also talk to each member about starting their journey. Trish used that word earlier. Fitness consultations, equipment orientations, making sure that you are happy, healthy, safe, well, while you're working within our walls, all right? And one of the biggest things that people don't realize is nationwide reciprocity. So what does that mean? As a member of the Y, you have the ability to access any YMCA in the entire country. There's more than 2,000 of them as a member, as part of our family of the YMCA of Bucks County. So moving on, one of the biggest things, we had a big call from the major impact that we'd like to make, and a big call to arms from our community members. A large growing demographic is active older adults in the community, so we'd like to announce that we're welcoming Silver Sneakers. That's part of a Medicare/Medicaid option, and we implore members to come in and talk to us about whether or not this is a viable option for them, all right? So it's a no-cost additional membership option to them. We have 66 members that have joined us thus far. This is a huge opportunity to impact our community in a big way. There are additional group exercise classes going on as well. Social responsibility, that third pillar of the YMCA, all right? And this is where our pathway programs come into play. So my grandfather, Navy veteran, Korean War, this is a big thing in my heart. Our Veterans Pathway Initiative provides a free 12-week membership that's comprehensive for all veterans that have served our country and their families. If they complete 16 of 21 visits at that, within that program, that veteran is then awarded an additional six months of membership for free as a thank you. So nine months of membership for total. In 2018 is when we launched this pathway program, and 47 veterans have been impacted, supported since that date through personal training, their own group exercise classes, developing in another small community within communities, and nutritional consultation. So our next opportunity, Seventh Grade Initiative. So we're surrounded by amazing school systems here in Warminster Township. And our Seventh Grade Initiative, that pathway program, for the entire duration of a youth's seventh-grade experience, whether or not they are public, private, or homeschooled, they have access to the Y free of charge. So when a seventh-grade student comes to us, we put them through what's called a teen strength orientation, where they hopefully, together, knit and build their own community, learn to make mistakes in a safe environment, and develop an opportunity to live a healthy lifestyle from seventh grade, from the age of 12, moving forward. To date, since our inception in 2016, we've impacted and supported 175 seventh graders. So next pathway opportunity in Warminster, Second Grade Swim Initiative. This is very, very important to us here in the Warminster community. Leo has done some great work in this area as well. And since its inception, we have had the opportunity to swim test over 500 second graders in the community. So what do we do? What is Second Grade Swim Initiative? It provides free swim safety testing to second graders within the community, and it also enables us to provide free swim lessons to those who qualify for those lessons. We wanted to thank our partners for their incredible generosity as well. So it's an awesome opportunity to make sure that we have the ability to prevent death by drowning in youth here in Warminster and YMCA of Bucks County. Moving on to, back to you. So Trish had mentioned our newest pathway program. Back to you. This is Substance Abuse Recovery. So Dan, you had, you had mentioned that initiative here in Warminster, and we are doing our part in our walls. This is again, a 12-week program to help individuals return to healthy lifestyles, the ability to live an active and healthy lifestyle within the community. They're provided with a free family membership for that 12-week program. Stay-in-play childcare is also provided on-site, and upon completion, they receive an additional three months of membership to continue that healthy journey. So we launched in March of 2019. We were the pilot location and program for YMCA of Bucks County, and 11 participants have been impacted. Our most recent class of graduates, amazing people to interact with on a daily basis. I am very proud to have known them and watched their growth, which is really incredible. And so in conclusion, how can, how can Warminster, how can you support your YMCA? So first and foremost, we're 624 York Road, right across the street from Archbishop Wood, all right? Speak about the work we do. It's great work. I believe in the work we do. We shared some of that with you tonight. If you have more questions, the door's always open. I'm happy to have more of a conversation, grab a cup of coffee, and chat about what your, what your desires happen to be within the community. Advocate for us, all right? So know someone if they can benefit from one of these pathways, and connect them with what we're doing in the community, so we can do, continue to do the great work that we do and help our community. It's a wonderful thing. Give. We'd love to be the charity of choice in Bucks County in general, right? So one of the, one of the big things that I love to talk about is summer camp, that financial assistance, the ability to impact a child's life from a very early age. $165 sends a child to camp for one week. So that's $13 a month, or if you're feeling generous, $1,650 for all 11 or 10 or 11 weeks of the summer. And finally, join, become a member. Come check out what we have to offer within our walls. We joke, but it's true, that Warminster YMCA is a welcoming place. I do my very best to know the name of every member who walks through the door. And that joke kind of comes in to cheers, and you'll see that we have here listed on the slide where everybody knows your name. So I just wanted, again, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you and share with you what we're, we've been able to accomplish with your help in Warminster, all right? I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dylan. You know, I'll let the board have some comments. I wanted to mention real quick before you jump in, the Silver Sneakers program's a big deal. A lot of people may not be aware of it yet. A lot of us on the board in 10, 20 years will know about it, but it's a, it's a big deal, so it's an excellent, excellent offering to our local seniors. And the other thing I wanted to point out, because the event just happened, the importance of what you guys do with the second grade swim program. And, and I know just this past weekend, I don't run many 5Ks, but my wife does, and she participated in the Jackson Heroes, and one of the beneficiaries of the Jackson Heroes 5K is, is the.
It is.
So, it's so important that we teach our kids to swim, so I really applaud how much the Y has been bringing that to our community and the whole county, so.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate Jackson Heroes as well. They're one of those generous partners that helps us do what we do in the community, so I agree. It was a great event, too.
Mr. McKeever.
Oh, sure. Dylan, you know, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, I was here in the beginning when you guys came in and basically assumed our recreation programming when we were struggling to finance it, so that that door was always kept open for the, for the youth of the township. I appreciate your involvement in the Rotary Club as well. I'm a Rotary member, and I know you guys are very involved with the local Rotary Club too, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Growing by leaps and bounds in the community with, you know, the people joining the Y. People live in healthy lifestyles. The swim program is really important for the second graders. You're doing great work, and continue on. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only, it's Brian here. Only shout-out, I just wanted to say that. I've been hearing fantastic things about you, Dylan, here at the local Y, and the job that you've been doing, so thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I appreciate it. Say hi to Natalie for me.
So they in no way paid for that endorsement there, right, Brian?
So this cheers. He knows their name.
He knows everybody's name. He's proving it. Well done. Well done.
Dylan, before you guys go, I want to ask Mr. Quinn to step up for one second. I neglected to mention tomorrow's event in my announcements. I was hoping that you would touch on that before you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to step up. So we talk about raising money and funds, so tomorrow is a, is a partnership golf event that is being held at Five Ponds by, by Five Ponds in honor of my son Kyle. And there's two main beneficiaries of that event, Centennial Education Foundation and the YMCA. So one of the partners in tomorrow's event is going to be the Y. So the proceeds, just like the Jackson 5K last week, a significant amount of proceeds from tomorrow's golf event are going to go to the YMCA. If you were to go onto our website, meaning Warminster Township's website, Five Ponds' website, there's a hot link right now, so if you felt compelled to give $13, we'll take five. It all adds up, and you can, you can donate to, to a kid to go to camp. You know, one of the things that we wrestled with back when we had our camp was how do we help kids go? We, we had events, you know, with Karen and the parking wreck, and, you know, how do we help the kids that can't afford to go to camp get there? Well, you saw. do we help kids go? We, we had events, you know, with Karen and, and the parking wreck, and, you know, how do we help the kids that can't afford to go to camp get there? Well, you saw that we gave so far forty-three thousand dollars at the Y, Warminster Township. We could have never done that. So we, it's, it's a, it's a big reach, but it happens in five-dollar donations at a time. So with that, tomorrow's outing is, is full, it's sold out, but the phone lines are open, and if you feel like making a pledge, we'll take it.
And even if someone wants to just come and have dinner, they can pay for dinner.
They can pay for dinner, yes, all right?
I'm looking forward to it. I'm playing with Mr. Kenner tomorrow, and I'm, I'm gonna need a few lessons from you right off the tee tomorrow, Craig, I'm out of practice, so. But I'm looking forward to it. It's always a great event, for a great cause, too. The CEF money alone goes for, for scholarships.
It all goes, it all stays in the community.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really good.
All right?
Thanks, Leo.
Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you here again.
Take care.
All right. All right, that will close our presentations. We'll now move into our Land Use Matters, Public Hearings, and Ordinances. First up will be Land Development two thousand and nineteen dash zero five, one sixty-seven Kirk Road, and for that, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Anuzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe counsel's here with their engineer.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
If you want to just briefly give a, a summary to the board, and then we'll move in with the resolution that we've prepared.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Gio Raffiale. I'm general counsel for the owner of the property located at one sixty-seven Kirk Road. It's a proposed three-lot subdivision where there is an existing house on Lot One and two new, four new construction lots, sort of behind to the side of the property. Property is proposed to be served by public water and sewer, and we're going to renovate the existing house and list that for sale probably first.
Thank you. Is board have any questions?
Any questions? I do not have any questions. The board, Brian, any questions?
I do not, no question.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, seeing none. The board has prepared Resolution Number two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-three. It is the conditional preliminary final major subdivision and land development approval, and it reads in pertinent part as follows, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors grants applicant conditional preliminary slash final approval of its major subdivision and land development application, proposing to subdivide the approximately four-point-one-four-seven acre property located at one sixty-seven Kirk Road within the township's R-dash-one residential district into three lots. Lot One will consist of a gross lot area of twenty-three thousand, one eighty-one square feet, and will be improved with the property's existing dwelling and all impervious coverage, with the exception of the existing shed, which will be located on Lot Two. Lot Two will consist of a lot area of eighty-three thousand, three fifty-five square feet, and will be improved with a single-family dwelling. And Lot Three will consist of a lot area of seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eleven square feet, and will be improved with a single-family dwelling as well. Project's improvement include the installation of street trees on each lot, the stormwater facilities will also be on Lots Two and Three. This conditional approval is conditioned on the following, in pertinent part complying with all the applicable township review letters, signing the township's required land development documentation, posting the project's financial security to the satisfaction of the township engineer and solicitor, making all design alterations associated with the waiver that we'll speak to in a moment relative to the stormwater management ordinance, the satisfaction of the township engineer, satisfying all applicable township code, sewer authority and water authority requirements, identifying all the project's stormwater inlets and outfall structures, obtaining all other applicable permits, and paying all applicable related costs and fees. Be it further resolved that applicant has requested ten waivers that are set forth in detail in the resolution, and each of those ten waivers have been reviewed by the township consultants, and there are no objections. And do we have a motion to approve this resolution as presented?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's have a comment. I want to first of all thank Mr. Kenner for going over this development with me earlier today, and I just wanted to mention that developer is being a good neighbor, and he's willing to pay to connect to the public sewer, which is huge, and I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if the board's aware. We had, over the years, a lot of people have looked at this, no one wants to connect to public sewer or run it, so it never made it in front of this board, but they've agreed to connect to public sewer. We worked out a milliner overlay that'll fix the road. I don't think we, it didn't work out as far as straightforward public improvements, but they're gonna run sewer. I think part of this is also an easement that they need, and so there was a delay last month to work that out, but we got it all done, so.
Just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Next up is the Golf Course Irrigation Project. For that, I'll turn it over to Township Manager, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, we did go out to bid previously, and a bid was awarded for the Golf Course Irrigation Project. The board subsequently authorized us to go out for financing for the project. PFM did handle that for us, and here from PFM is Zach Willard to let us know the results and make a recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you, Zach Willard from PFM. Also with me, Mark Stein from Eckhart Siemens, he's your note counsel. He'll go over the ordinance. I'll be, be real brief on the handout that's in front of you. You got the red box on the front. So we were here about a month ago, went through some different financing options and structures. What we did after that was we sent out a competitive RFP to a number of banks across Pennsylvania, both, you know, locally and statewide. We got the results back. If you look on the first, on the second page, you can see the winning bid was from M&amp;T Bank with a fixed rate for the full term of a two-fifty, okay? And as you scroll down the other bids, you can see, you know, the, the last place bid was a three-forty, so almost one percent higher than the winning bid. So I just want to point that out. I mean, that's exactly why you go through a competitive process for things like this, because you can get banks on different days that have different opinions, and, you know, here, the spread between the first and last place was, was almost one percent, okay? So a two-fifty fixed for the term, very cheap money, you know, as we talked about last month, interest rates are literally at all-time lows, okay? So, very cheap. I do want to remind everybody, you know, while this is a GO of the township, this is paid for out of golf course revenues. I think that's an important part, you know, to, to, to note. The total bid here versus what we were projecting last week is about fifty-four thousand dollars better, okay? So significant savings. If you go to the next page, you can see what the payments will be on the new loan, all right, in column six. So that's what John and Greg, you know, will have in the budget, and it's gonna line up with the other debt of the township, which is reflected on page, the page number's hidden there, but two pages later, you can see the, the general fund debt service, the golf fund, and then the, the one small liquid fuels fund. So that's, that's your total debt. You know, I think this was pretty successful. Again, a two-fifty fixed for the, for the nine years was good. And if, if you do recall, you, last month, you did opt, when we showed you the different structures, you did opt to go with the shortest structure, so the shortest debt term, you know, which I think was a wise decision, and that's what the two-fifty will be fixed for that nine years, okay? So happy to answer any questions. You know, Mark has an ordinance in front of you that would, you know, make this a reality if we want to move forward with it. We'll lock in the interest rates and move towards settlement.
And Zach, could you just touch on briefly why we made the recommendation to go with M&amp;T versus Signature, even though Signature had a slightly lower fixed rate?
Yeah, good point. So the M&amp;T loan, you know, when we bid this out, we asked for it to be prepayable at any time without penalty, in order to be the most flexible for the township, you know, should the golf course fund ever be able to pay it down early or have some extra money left over, you can do that, all right? The M&amp;T loan did have that ability, the, the second, what we called the second-place bid, even though the interest rate was a little tiny bit lower from Signature Public Funding, did have a prepayment penalty involved with doing that. It just makes these kinds of things, you know, stickier, more complicated. The M&amp;T loan was a nice, clean bid that followed all the things that we asked for, so we do typically recommend, unless there's a very widespread in the interest rate that you move forward with, with, you know, what we call a clean bid. Yeah, thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Zach, and I know you said it earlier, but just to reiterate, the finances that are being used to pay for this come entirely out of the golf fund. There are no tax dollars involved in this financing. And so with that, unless the board has any other questions, I'd recommend a motion to award the, the RFP or the bid to M&amp;T Bank.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comment from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries five votes.
And Mr. Chairman, the next item would be adoption of Ordinance seven fifty-eight, which is the associated note debt ordinance for two thousand and nineteen for this. Bond Counsel Mark Stein is here. In case you have any questions, he has prepared everything, which has been properly advertised.
Is there any questions for Mr. Stein? Welcome, Mr. Stein. Thanks for coming out. I don't have any questions either, so I'm gonna call, with the, for the motion?
A motion to adopt Ordinance seven fifty-eight.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Up, it's low. Any questions or comments on this from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, carries five votes.
And Mr. Chairman, the last bit of business on this would be approval of two thousand note reimbursement resolution, which is two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-seven. This allows us to get going on the project, and if we expend funds prior to receiving the proceeds of the debt, that we can reimburse ourselves. Did I explain that correctly, Mr. Stein?
Exactly correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Monroe.
Mr. Monroe has the motion.
I defer to Mr. Monroe.
Yay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McKee with the second. Any questions or comments on the board?
Thank you, just thank you for putting this all together.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. You need the floor. All right, so that's gonna end that, we're good now? Yeah, all right, moving on. All right. First up next is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to the five-minute guideline, as recognized by me. And we also have a second one where we discuss agenda items. So, Ms. Boil, come on up.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Pat Boyle, four oh nine Grant Avenue. I'm also the Secretary of the William Tenet Alumni Association, and I just want to tell everybody tonight that Veterans Day, November eleventh, this year, once again, we will be having the Veterans Day program at William Tenet High School, where fifty-seven former alumni members, former students, and former employees will be inducted into the Vietnam Veterans Wall of Fame. And all veterans are invited to it at eight AM on Monday, November eleventh, at William Tenet.
At the high school.
At the high school, yes.
Awesome.
And if anybody is interested in having their name put on the wall, they can contact us at tenetalumni@gmail.com, and we'll give you the particulars of getting your name on the wall.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I know you do a lot for that, so.
Come on down, ma'am. How are you this evening?
Hi. My name is Patty Garnacini, and I've spent most of my life in Warminster. I currently live at the corner of Hamilton Drive and Grant Avenue, where I've actually lived since nineteen ninety-seven. That's twenty-two years owning this property. My property was largely purchased because it had enough room on the side of the house, but not twenty feet extra, for a boat that was owned at the time. Before the house was purchased, it was double-checked that it was legal to place a recreational vehicle there, and it was perfectly fine. Another reason why I purchased my home in Warminster, and why others have purchased their homes there, is that we were not subjected to homeowner association-type rules. Most people that own homes in Warminster have a small patch of lands beyond their house. Warminster has always been a home for the average type of person, and families were always welcomed there. My family is currently a family of seven, so owning a travel trailer is perfect for us. We purchased our current and fourth travel trailer in March of two thousand and sixteen. That was just six months before the new code of Warminster Township, section twenty-seven, twenty-two, oh four point three, was put into order. We spent thousands of dollars on our camper confidently, because we knew we had a place to put it. We've been placing our recreational things on the side of our house, near the property line, but not extenuating over, for twenty-two years, without any kind of problem. However, I have challenging neighbors. I even had a neighbor once who felt it was okay to cut down my fence so that they could work on a project easier for themselves, and when I commented that that was an issue for me, I was, the police were, was called on me. And the police came out and explained to that particular individual that they needed to put back my fence. So you can just see from one example that's on record what I've had to deal with. And this type of code that was put in the township is just some, perfect for someone who's looking for revenge or to do something with a vendetta. So most people aren't even quite aware of this code yet. I know, I understand that there was a big explanation of all this, and, but I have five children, I'm a busy mom, I didn't hear about it. You know, in all the years that I've lived here, I just never dreamed that such a thing would come up. So the code says that you, part of it I get and I understand. You, you can't have your travel trailer on the street, that's logical, because that impacts, you know, you can't leave it there long-term. That impacts people going by. But mine is off to the side of the house, it doesn't bother anyone. If anything, it provides a little bit of privacy, it's a nice-looking travel trailer. The neighbor in question even once commented, "Oh, it was beautiful." But this type of code is not being pushed throughout the township. So just about on every street that you go down, you will find recreational vehicles that do not meet this code. When I went to the Office of License and Inspections to see if I could possibly be grandfathered from this code, because I've been here so long, I was informed that it didn't matter that I was a resident for twenty-two years. And I was told that the Board of Supervisors were basically like gods, and with the flick of a pen, they could take away anyone's property rights without giving it a second thought or care. The Township License Office also claimed that they would have to hire many more employees to actually try to enforce this code. So there are only, when someone complains and has a vendetta against another neighbor, this is when they show up. So this code is encouraging negative relations between neighbors. Neighbors are being blackmailed, "If you don't do this, I'm gonna tell the township about your camper or your boat." People are afraid to speak up, because they're afraid that then you'll go and put this law on them. And people in Warminster don't, you know, a lot of the properties don't have a lot of grounds. There is nowhere else. This is a family thing. So my choices, I was explaining my choices, so my choice is I can pay six hundred dollars to take a chance and attempt to get a variance to have the parking spot that I've always had. I can build a ninety-foot driveway across the back of my yard, or I can pay to have my camper put somewhere else, which kind of defeats the purpose of having a camper in the first place to be able to take my children on economical trips. So all the choices that are available to me are very expensive. My rights to use my property has been taken away from me by this unfair code. What kind of people have recreational vehicles? Young families do. This code is a direct attack on such families. Warminster Township is discriminating against young families with this code, section twenty-seven dash twenty-two, oh four point three. dash twenty-two, oh-four-point-three. It is reasonable to have a code not to have long-term parking in the street. It is, but it is not reasonable to take away the rights of the people, to keep their recreational vehicles on their own property, in a manner that fits on their grounds. It is not reasonable to have a code that the township is unable to enforce in a uniform manner, and is only used as a tool for nasty residents to seek revenge, or blackmail other families. I'm asking for the Warmminster Board of Supervisors to care. I'm asking for them to please give the Warmminster families back the right to use their recreational things, in a way that best fits on their own grounds. I'm asking for an end to the young family discrimination that is going on, and to be welcoming to all families. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I mean, it's, it's something that we'd like to hear more about after you.
Yeah, sure. Zoning is always a challenge, because zoning is inherently restricting the use of someone's property. And we recognize that when people have private property, they wanna enjoy that property, they certainly have rights to that property. We also recognize that there are neighbors involved, and there's community involved, and, for instance, you wouldn't want someone to put a twenty-four-hour drive-through restaurant next to you. That's why we have zoning, to make sure that that is all in harmony. Sometimes it is a little bit messy. I don't know the origin of the, the ordinance, I believe that occurred before I got in, before I came. But we can certainly look into it. As far as the enforcement, we do try to enforce it uniformly, but in these cases, we don't have people out on patrol. So, normally, the, when we see these violations by a report of a neighbor who doesn't like the shed that's too close to them, or the RV, or boat, or whatever the infraction may be. So, I would suggest, one thing that's gonna occur, is that we are looking at the zoning ordinance right now. I believe it's going to the Planning Commission.
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second. I know this board always likes to hear the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So, from a policy standpoint, I believe that's the appropriate place to start. Outside the policy, with the ordinance that's in place, we have to go with whatever the zoning officer has determined. So, I understand what you're saying. It's up to the Planning Commission to make that recommendation, if the board so chooses to change that policy. Just understand that if, that it does change, yes, there would be some people who would be allowed to have recreational vehicles or trailers right on the property line. That could upset the other neighbors. So, there's always a give and take in these kinds of situations. But ultimately, that would be a policy decision for the board to make.
The next step is this would, this would be remanded, sort of, to planning?
Well, I, I would recommend that since the zoning ordinance is going under review anyways, and since it's being discussed, you know, in just short order at the Planning Commission, that would be the appropriate venue to have the conversation.
Okay.
I already know they're planning to talk on such topics as chickens, and a few other, few other things that, that come up, and this would be another appropriate topic for them to discuss.
Can we provide them with the topic? So, it's not incumbent on the resident?
So, residents, can they attend that meeting?
Of course, the Planning Commission's are open meetings.
Do you know the date of the next, the twenty-second?
The Planning Commission and the EAC has been invited as well to discuss the zoning, proposed zoning ordinance, October twenty-second. It's a Tuesday, next Tuesday, or this coming Tuesday, at seven o'clock in this room. And it is open to the public, as all Planning Commission meetings are.
But we will.
Us all those types, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Please go right ahead.
They can discuss those types of issues, then.
Yes, the Planning Commission, the EAC have been sent the zoning ordinance and asked to go through and highlight what specific issues they wanna discuss, so that way we make sure we hit everything that night.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that, okay, so we will provide that. It's not incumbent upon you guys. And if, do you happen to have that, that typed out electronically? That, that statement you read?
Yes.
If you could, if you could always just email it to, to the board. That way, we can just provide that statement. So, what we try to do is we try not to make you have to go to ten thousand meetings. You're more than welcome to, to show up at the Planning Commission meeting, and, and say the same thing. But if you wanted us to provide that statement, then we can do so. All right. So, we'll, we'll get, we'll get, yeah. All right. All right. Any other public comment at this time? Yes, sir, come on down.
Hey, how you doing?
Good evening.
I live on Mason. You'd, perfect segue, Greg, into, in harmony with our neighbors. I'm here on behalf of my, myself and my neighbors on Mason.
Could you state your name for the record? For the record, so Amanda has it, could you state your full name?
Okay, Robert Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. We knew, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors at Mason and Orchard Road. The new tenant on Street Road, it's a window and door contractor. They did a fantastic job cleaning up their, their new business. I think too good. They had actually dilapidated sheds in the back of their property. They were about eight to ten feet high. They took them down. Well, because of that, now the lights from Wawa now shine like a beacon to our, you know, into the neighborhood now. So, it's, I mean, it's, it's great that they did that, but now there's the, the second issue with, with some, you know, lights, and, and then, again, harmony with your neighbors. It, it would be great if we, if the board could just look into this, somehow maybe come up with a solution. I mean, there's, whether put shields on the lights, or, I know it's not really feasible to dim them down, because I know it is a business, twenty-four-hour business is, as well. Or, I know it's always been brought up, extend the fence all the way, but those are just, I mean, my one neighbor, they're elderly, they have some health concerns, they can't be here at the meetings. So, I'm, I'm pretty much speaking for them, because they're right on the corner, and it, it basically shines right in their house, between them, this new contractor, and then the other collision mags, other things like that, now that.
And, and we've already started looking into that, because we have received those comments. We're gonna be having someone go out there with a light meter. The first thing that we check is if there's compliance with the ordinance. If they're not in compliance with the ordinance, then we'll ask them to come into compliance. If they are in compliance, then we would have a discussion, and being neighborly, you know, feel free to go up to them as well. And, yes, with lighting, there's all kinds of creative things that can be done, with intensity, with shielding, and hopefully that they would, they would go ahead and comply, and, and be good neighbors. But we're at that first step right now, to go out there with a light meter, and then after that, have a discussion with them.
Amanda, when did you say you're going out there soon, right?
Next week, I intend upon going out. Because we, we're, I was waiting until it gets darker earlier in the evening.
Yeah.
So, then I can go out and do the light meters, and we can compare it to the approved light meters on their land development plans, and then proceed from there with what course we need to take.
Okay.
Just wanted you to know, I received some phone calls from your neighbors, and I passed it on to the township, and you can see they're already, they're already engaged.
Okay.
And trying to find some solutions for you.
That's great. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna move to the next section. And that's gonna be the consent agenda for that. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item A is approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B is approval of your minutes from the meeting September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item C is approval of resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five, allocation of foreign fire ta, insurance taxes to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association. This is the annual pass-through that, that you do. Item D is approval of resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six, authorizing the allocation of general municipal system aid between the Police Defined Benefit Plan and Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Plan. Again, this is the annual pass-through that we get from state aid into our pension funds. Item E, we've had a request to move that over to unfinished business, so Mr. Kennard could have a little bit more of a explanation on that one. Item F, we do have some outstanding issues, so I'm gonna ask that you pull that from the agenda, and it'll be most likely on your next meeting's agenda. Item G is a two-year contract with T. Schiefer Contractors. We went out to bid for snow removal services. Now, the bids have been included in your packet. We are recommending the low bidder, and the costs are comparable to what was in the last, last two years. Item H would be approval of traffic improvements easement for nine eleven York Road. Item I would be long-stress school redevelopment. Stone Ridge Estates, release number three from escrow, in the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred eight dollars and fifty cents, as recommended by the engineer. Item J is Wendy's, eight thirteen East County Line Road, release number two from escrow, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, as recommended by the engineer. Item K is Hart School, release number twenty from escrow, in the amount of twelve thousand, ten dollars, as recommended by the engineer. And item L is twelve seventy Murns Road, release number six from escrow, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars, as recommended by the engineer. So, if the board is agreeable, I would recommend a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exceptions of items E and F.
Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Consent agenda carries five oh now. Back to.
Treasure.
Treasure, oh, that's right.
The item you pulled.
Yep. No, it's going, it's going.
That's unfinished business.
You pulled a fast one on me. I see what he did.
Okay.
He bumped it over. So, without further ado, I'll turn the mic over to our treasurer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to put forth a motion to accept the September transfers, also accept the supplemental bill list dated September thirty, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of seven hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and the bill list dated October seventeen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one million, two hundred six thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? From the public? Seeing none? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Carrie's five oh. All right. So, back to financial statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've been saying every single month, we are still generally tracking to budget. We do anticipate a budget amendment coming up at the next meeting. Of course, that is with a very large deficit in there, but I've reported on that quite a bit, so nothing new to report on the financial statement.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster on the financial statement? All right. Now, we'll move to unfinished business. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I will turn that, well, going back to the consent agenda, this would be consider adoption of resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight, authorizing execution of the traffic signal application associated with York Road and Roberts Road for the Lidl project. And with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Kennard for a little explanation.
Yes, this is a standard resolution. PennDOT requires the board adopt, along with the application that the manager will sign. This actually, it doesn't say anything on the first page or the second page. I realize if you go back to the back of the application, and your traffic engineer worked and approved this already, it does reference, as Mr. Schuster noted, this is part of the Lidl development. You've already approved these improvements as part of the land development approval. If you look at the application on the second page, this is related to the York Road and Roberts Road traffic signal. As part of your, your approval, the developer is required to modify that signal, make upgrades. They include push buttons, a new mast arm, also a new right-turn lane on the southbound approach. There's numerous other upgrades to the signal, along with crosswalks for pedestrian access, and along with two new handicap ramps. So, they're all, they're all upgrades, positive improvements. PennDOT, before they will actually sign off on that application, require this board, because it is a traffic signal that you already maintain, and you will continue to maintain, you need to sign off as a board that they're okay to review and approve it. Your traffic engineers already looked at that, signed off on that, but it isn't clear on the first couple pages that's associated with a land development project you've already approved. So, everything's in order. I looked at it as well before the meeting tonight, and I would recommend that you adopt resolution two thousand nineteen twenty-eight, and also authorize the township manager, who will be responsible for that traffic signal forever and ever, which you already are anyway, but you're also acknowledging that you're gonna be responsible for all those upgrades. The township maintains that. I think it indicate Mr. P. Carter is their contact, and, yeah, obviously with Public Works, but that is your traffic signal that you own and maintain. So, this is telling PennDOT to go ahead and, and do that review and sign off on it.
I wanna thank Mr. Kennard. Spoke to him about this project today, and I'm really happy that they're making those improvements. It's gonna be a lot safer having that right-turning lane. We had discussed this at one of the meetings, so I think this is, this is really good for all the folks that live over, and all the traffic that goes down York Road, too. I think it's, it's a really great improvement, and I wanna thank you for your input.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kennard? Anything else? You're good? We're good? All right.
So, the motion would be to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight.
Motion.
Kathy with the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mark with the second. Any comments, questions? From the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Carrie's five oh. Thank you. All right. New business. I will turn this over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item of new business this, this afternoon, this evening. Consider ratification of agreement between Warmminster Township and Warmminster Township Employees Organization, AFSMAT District Council, eighty-eight, Local Two-Two-Eight-Nine. I have reviewed the agreement in executive session with the board. I do wanna thank the WIDO Union for a successful negotiation. They have ratified this agreement. It's been presented to you for ratification this evening, with my recommendation.
All right. All right, can we get a motion to ratify?
So with.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Just to comment, I think it was a, a great agreement between both parties, between the township and for the employees, and good job, Mr. Schuster. Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank everyone involved, both on our team and on the union side.
Everybody involved in it in the township, y'all did a really good job. I wanna thank all, whoever was involved. Thank you.
Just another question. I mean, these, these agreements, once we're executed, they're available to the public.
Yes.
Because I, I think the public should review these agreements that we have with our employees, because that's where their taxpayers' money is going.
Yep, they're available. Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Ratified five zero. All right. Moving right on. Professional reports. First up, Township Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, and if you have any questions, a few things I'd like to point out. First of all, I'm running online in my Facebook page, a Halloween costume contest. Don't get too excited. The age limit is ten years old. Sorry. But we'd encourage anyone that wants to enter to send your entry, your kid's entry, into townshipmanager@warmminsterpa.org. We have three different categories. One is funniest, one is best overall, and one is scariest. Each winner is gonna get two free movie tickets. So, we know the kids always love those, so look forward to seeing how creative the kids are this year. The next thing, there is an election coming up, I've been told. I've seen a few signs out. I just wanna let the public know that if there's any questions on the election, the best source of information would be the Bucks County Board of Elections. They have a very good website that lists out the candidates, the sample ballots, the polling locations, so they can go ahead and, and go there. Along with the election, I just wanna notify the board, it's my intention, unless there's Uh, along with the election, I just want to notify the board, it's my intention, unless there's any objection, that as soon as someone is elected as a supervisor, uh, I would give that individual full access. I would include them on all emails that the board would typically see. Uh, my intention is to get, uh, whoever that person or persons are up to speed as quickly as possible.
That would be great, because when I was elected eight years ago, that wasn't provided to me. Not a packet, nothing. So, I appreciate that.
And, and along with that would be my intent, and I'm saying all this because we know we're gonna get at least one new supervisor, uh, it'd be my intention to also do some kind of, uh, session or even multiple sessions, uh, to bring the, that person or persons up to speed.
Can I opt out of emails and packets?
No.
You got two, two hundred thirty.
That'd be very helpful, Mr. Schuster, to whoever is, is elected, because there is an adjustment period, and the more information you get, the easier the job becomes.
Absolutely.
All right. Kathy, Brian, and myself all benefited from having people onboard us.
Yes, we did.
So, absolutely.
And, thank you. And the last thing that I have is, um, I know, and I'm not fully versed on this, but I know the municipal authority has been having some issues getting their bills out. I know some supervisors and others have been getting emails about getting large bills in. Just want to, um, let the, the public know that they should contact the municipal authority with those issues. We don't have any information here on their bills or their usage, um, so we can go ahead and refer them, but if anyone has those issues, uh, the best is to contact the municipal authority.
All right, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Time now for Schuster's report. Mr. Ian Ozy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has prepared our report, um, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to field them. I will commend your attention to, uh, one action item that was set forth in that report, and that is, uh, my request this evening, uh, to seek authorization, uh, from the board to finalize and present to the court a amended settlement stipulation in the matter of Wawa Inc. versus Montgomery Town, Montgomery, excuse me, Warmminster Township Zoning Hearing Board. Little type...
What happened?
Little forming issue there.
We can send it over to them.
I'm sure they'll be glad to take the issue. As part of, uh, a background, uh, we did a thorough review of this situation. In two thousand eleven, Wawa came, uh, to the township seeking to develop their property, and furtherance of that development, they needed certain zoning relief. Um, they've received that zoning relief from the zoning hearing board, all but one point of relief relative to signage. That relief, uh, was conditioned with several conditions. Um, two of the conditions are the ones that face us today, or, or still, uh, at issue today, one of which was the delivery of, uh, trucks, um, and, and agreement that they were to enter in with the township, and the other was rear access. Um, conditions four and five. Uh, condition five, which speaks to the rear access, says, uh, prohibits commercial trucks from using the rear access of the property. The problem with that condition is, it never defined what constitutes a commercial truck. That matter was not appealed. Fast forward to two thousand fourteen, the zoning officer noted that Wawa was not living up to, uh, its, uh, agreement, its condition, that it would maintain, uh, that prohibition, they would police that prohibition, so they recited. Wawa then appealed in two thousand fourteen from that citation, essentially saying, can you give us some time to fix this out before you hit us with fines? The zoning hearing board opted to deny that request. Subsequent to that, then Wawa appeals to the Court of Common Pleas in two thousand fifteen. At the Court of Common Pleas in two thousand fifteen, Wawa and the township solicitor at that time broker a settlement of that citation appeal. That settlement included, uh, the certain conditions, additional terms, in furtherance, not in lieu of, the two thousand eleven decision. And that included certain, uh, that, excuse me, that included certain fencing, certain landscaping, the installation of height bars and bollards, uh, and also underscored, uh, the need to comply, uh, with the prior decision in two thousand fifteen. Fast forward further to two thousand nineteen, in June of this year, uh, after, uh, review and discussion with township consultants and Wawa consultants, it was deemed that the height bars, uh, were presenting a safety risk to vehicular traffic. And so, as part and parcel of that determination, in meeting with Wawa, the, um, it was determined and decided that, uh, they would be directed to remove the bollards on the condition that they enter into an amended stipulation drafted to my satisfaction, the township's satisfaction, um, that would essentially identify the import of those height bars, what they were designed to do, which is, in furtherance of condition five, to prevent the rear access being used by trucks. Uh, they were to present a alternative traffic plan, they were to present certain contact information, so individuals that would see that violation happening would call Wawa, because under the decision of two thousand eleven, it is Wawa's job to police this prohibition. It also underscores the import that every other aspect of the stipulation and every other aspect of the two thousand eleven decision remains in full force and effect. And lastly, and most importantly, it finally gives certain definition to what constitutes a commercial truck that was never done. And we've been able to negotiate that that essentially prohibits any other class of truck, other than a class one truck, from taking that rear access. And a class one truck is anything that's in excess of six thousand pounds or greater length of twenty feet. Um, I'm also requesting that the court maintain jurisdiction over this issue, so when and if there's an issue, uh, with Wawa, we can take this to a judge and not have to go through the procedural morass of citations and follow-ups and appeals to zoning hearing boards and appeals to court. So those are the essential terms, and again, to underscore this, this is in furtherance of the underlying decision in two thousand eleven that was never appealed. It's designed to give greater enforcement capability, to kind of end this Groundhog Day of what constitutes a commercial truck, how do we police it? Um, and lay, and, and my final point is, one of the things I thought was important, after this has been in place for a year, I would like the principals to sit down and to analyze this, to see, has this worked? What can we do better? What hasn't worked? What needs to be changed? And we'll revisit that within a year of the court's approval of the stipulation. So with that being said, it would be my recommendation to authorize my office to finalize this amended settlement, compile the remaining signatures from Wawa Council and from the zoning hearing board, and then present this to the Court of Common Pleas to be made a binding order of court.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt? Is adopt the right word?
To authorize.
Authorize. Authorize such a stipulation.
Motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Ian Ozy. Uh, I want to thank you for putting together this proposal, and also to give the court, uh, the authority to handle anything down the road. I think that takes the pressure off the township, and, and, you know, hopefully we'll have a good working relationship and all that, but if something does happen, we have that option. So I want to thank you for doing a good job.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other... No? Any questions or comments from the public? Please?
Hi, Ellen. I just have a couple of questions for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm not surprised at what I heard tonight, because I had heard it earlier, so, but I wanted to know, what does the length of a vehicle have to do with any, nothing over eight foot two? Because that's when the zoning board gave them their variances, that nothing, and the, in the, of the zoning board minutes, or notes, whatever the sonographer takes. He told them to take the largest SUV and put four inches on it. Now what is stopping the height? The length of the vehicle doesn't matter.
The condition speaks to commercial trucks. That is what was part of the order.
But also, did you read the other part where it said...
Yes, yes, I actually, and that was, that was actually included in, in the, um, in the transcript that was attached to the appeal. And, and I would suggest that the, uh, articulating a, a commercial truck as being not greater than six thousand pounds and not greater than twenty feet in length quantifies what a class one truck is.
Okay. Well, the neighbors were not to see any of the vehicles over the fence, so that is why, if you can have a, a pickup truck and put tall stuff on top of it, and that's higher, and that's why the height is the question. It's not the length and not the weight, it was the height, and that's why they got all their ground and they took extra ground? I mean, it's, it's just like, do what you, get, go to the zoning board and then do what you want to do and get away with it.
Well, in, in fairness, the, the transcript, when they were talking about commercial trucks, it was contemplated that the trucks that they were contemplating to allow for the rear access would be your SUVs, your vans, and contractor trucks. Okay? And then they actually made reference to large tractor trailers. Height was never discussed in terms of the formation of a condition. And so, when, when you're limiting, uh, a class one truck, which is your vans, your minivans, your SUVs, um, and your standard truck, um, including an additional cap, um, when, when you have those quantifiers on it, those things that will limit the size, the, the, the height is going to be proportioned to that limitation. You're not gonna have...
Not necessarily.
Well, unless it's the...
I mean, I was at all the zoning meetings, you weren't, so you didn't actually hear them. You're only going by what you hear now or what you think.
No, I'm going on the transcript.
Okay, but I was actually there and heard all the discussions that night, and all the nights, and they did say, nothing taller than a SUV, measure four, tallest one, and put four inches on top. That's how they came to the height, and they have not been able to stop that tall height, and that's what we went. I don't care, if some lawn guy has a, a tractor on his back of, trailers on the back of his truck, and wants to come in and get gas, if they can go down that driveway, that doesn't bother us, but, so that takes your twenty, they could be twenty feet with the truck and a trailer. So that's, what you're doing is going off on something else, and they still will have the tall trucks go down. What are you doing that will not, will stop them?
Again, to reiterate, what we were doing here was resolving a safety issue which was presented by the height bars. The height bars were in furtherance of condition five, and condition five seeks to prohibit the rear access. Now, you're, you're referencing certain testimony that was presented at the hearing.
Well, that's how they got all their variances, and they got all the buffer zone area, give them five feet, and they took eight. I mean, they, they testified one thing and did the other. And that's how they, now they're just changing around.
That's not before, that's not before the board under this amended, uh, stipulation.
Well, it should be considered the whole thing, because they're not being honest. And that is part of it. If you go to a zoning board and swear you're gonna tell, be honest, you should be honest, and you should be able to be trustworthy, and they're not. They're doing what they want, and they didn't want it in the beginning, and they were upset, and two years ago, everything was fine, they were all agreeable with it. Now what was the real danger, though?
What was the real danger of the height bars?
Mm-hmm.
There was, the consultants reported that they presented safety concerns to vehicular traffic.
In what way?
In that they weren't being properly maintained, uh, depending on, um, certain weather circumstances. If, if the chains became dislodged, they, they could fall and hit a windshield. Uh, they weren't weathering properly, and most importantly, they weren't effective. But irrespective of that...
Yes, they were effective.
Irrespective of that, in June of this year, the board made a determination upon the information and belief of the consultants and the recommendations of the consultants of both the township and Wawa, that they presented a threat to vehicular traffic. And that's not something that you want to guess on or, or try to hedge your bet. If there is the possibility, however remote, that it could threaten vehicular traffic, and, and if there is a, a greater likelihood of a more effective means to control that access, the township opted to go the safer route.
Now, what are, what bars are you talking about? The, the one that they put up that was not legal, sixteen feet high and the chain, is that the one with the chains they're talking about, which was never approved, not inspected? They just did it because they wanted to do it? I mean, that's, that's their problem. They did it, and that should be their responsibility to do what's legal. I mean, anybody in the township then can put up and do whatever they want, because you didn't even want to make them take down the illegal one when they, we brought that up. That's what brought the question up, is there was a sixteen-foot one. Everything was to be below the fence level, and that's way above the fence level? They put chains in there, and I had pictures, and I brought them in. The chain, now your safety advisor should have looked at that point too, because the chains were not a solid chain, they were, opened up, the links opened up. What you can't put anything heavy on a chain that opens up. And I even brought in a chain that, when I went over to Home Depot, the fellow said, oh, these weren't made to hold anything, and that's what they were using, and he gave some, there were, uh, some kind of a galvanized and s, s, thing that would hold much heavier weight than that. Why didn't we, why weren't they told, your traffic engineer, your safety engineer, whomever did it all, why didn't he look into the reason why there was, that bar came down? Then the reason, and first of all, it wasn't approved, no plans, you didn't even know it was going up. It went up, and not one of you could make them, would make them take it down. They were allowed to do it. That's where the chains broke. So why is that now the, this thing of safety? It's their neglect, not anybody else's neglect.
Well, I'm pleased to report this evening that the height bar controversy and saga is done.
Well, for, with all due respect, it is not done.
They weren't effective.
Sir, wait a minute, sir.
They weren't effective.
Okay.
Please, they weren't effective. The board elected to engage my office to negotiate an alternative, and that alternative is a, uh, series of signage and striping on the rear access to, to, in furtherance of the condition five that was not appealed by anyone in two thousand eleven, which means it's sacrosanct, and that condition, condition five prohibited commercial trucks, period. What I've done here, and what I'm recommending that I get authorization for this evening, adds greater definition, allows for better enforceability, allows for greater accountability, and it's safer. And I respectfully suggest it's more effective, and within one year's time, when we review this, if it's, if I'm found to be wrong, we will review it, and if changes need to be made, if alterations need to be made, we'll address them at that time with the board's, uh, um, ultimate approval.
Now, I ask the board members, what is the signage and the, the other things that they're doing? I'm asking the board members now.
The board members don't have to answer. You can address me, and the board members do not have...
All right, then you. I don't care.
And I will send it back to him. Here's the bottom line, is when I would go over there, I would see height bars hanging down at the entrance right off of, of Mearns, I would see them hanging down at CVS, and then we saw the big one. We got them to take the big one down by doing this.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I saw all those bars at different points hanging down like this, off of this. So that's, that's what I saw.
Okay. Now may I ask...
And the signage part will be decided by the professionals. I am not a traffic engineer.
Well, have you decided now what's going to go up? I mean, if you're going to prove something, shouldn't you know what they're really going to do?
Yes, yes, and, and, and we've reviewed that in executive, and again, it, it mirrors the, the language of the stipulation, and at varying points, uh, along the rear access, it has, uh, an icon sign that identifies, uh, no trucks. It has a sign that expressly states that there's no deliveries and no commercial trucks, and then further defines it on the signage of over six thousand pounds and/or twenty feet in length, and, and that also is mirrored in various striping along the rear access.
Okay, now the striping is on the ground?
What's that?
The striping's on the ground?
Correct.
Okay, what happens when it's snowing and icy? You can't read that.
The signage would be there for you then. The signage would be there for you.
They had, they had, they did all that for years before, and it didn't work. Even Mark and Kathy said that they had, uh, something similar in their area, when the lady was brought up about the Perkins, how people were coming over, and you, you both said it doesn't work. Well, how come it's gonna work here and, when it doesn't work in your own neighborhood? Mark, do you know why it would work?
I'm gonna defer to counsel.
See, none of you are big enough to speak up.
When the signage doesn't work...
I'm funny big enough. I'm, I'm so done with this. I'm gonna defer to counsel.
When the site, when, when...
I think the folks at home are done with this too, by the way, but I'm gonna defer to counsel.
When, when the striping on the road cannot be seen, you have the signage. And again, remember, this is in furtherance of condition five that puts the onus on Wawa to police this. If residents see this not working, they're gonna call the phone number that's gonna be made available.
I don't think we should have to call Wawa, because they have said they will not take calls from us, and when I have that in...
That's no longer through our negotiation, I'm happy to say.
Well, then you, then you send something to us that they will take the calls.
Absolutely, well, that's, that's gonna be part of the court order.
No, I want, I want something sent to us personally saying, because we've got the emails...
Certainly, well, you're gonna get a copy of this, you're gonna get a copy of this when it's executed.
We got the email, and furthermore, you didn't want us to be in part of it, you made it up all yourselves, you made it up, you didn't want us to put any input from us, so don't make us now afterwards have input for, to report. It should be you people reporting them, because you're the ones that made it up. Don't push it off on somebody else.
And lastly, I'll conclude, um, and then make my recommendation again.
And may I ask, what is the...
You had the opportunity, ma'am, to make yourself a party. Had you had made yourself a party to this action, had you appealed the condition in two thousand eleven or made yourself a party in two thousand fourteen, then you would have a legal interest in this litigation.
Sir...
You, you opted not to do that.
Sir, let me tell you, wait a minute.
Instead, you come to these meetings...
With all due respect, let me tell you something.
Instead, you come to these meetings, every...
We did not have anything to appeal.
Every meeting, and you, and you, you, yes, you did. You come to these meetings, and you try to...
What were we against to appeal it? We were in agreement with it.
You tried to get other votes from the apple.
I'm talking now, sir. We are in agreement with it. If we're in agreement with something, you don't appeal it. You don't go and say, oh, I appeal this because I'm in agreement with it. In fact, we helped write it up, and Mr. Schuster was with us when we did it. He was, his idea to go to the court and get it done with the court stipulation, it wasn't us. But if you take it there, we don't appeal it when we're approving it. What, what are you gonna sit there and say you appeal what? How do you appeal something that you approved?
In two thousand eleven, if you did not like the, the way that the order was crafted and, and the way the conditions were crafted, you could have appealed that. You didn't.
It was, everything was fine until just now when you took it down. Now, don't put it back into the...
The, 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 excuse me, the bollards were not part of the two thousand eleven decision.
We were, everything was to see, well, at that time, you did not see it was not working, so when you saw it wasn't working, that's only then that you would appeal it. You don't appeal it before. So that is a thing, you don't appeal when it's before, you appeal afterwards when you find it's not working. And can I ask, what is the rush to go up to the court and take it, remove it? What are you gonna do? If, you should keep it there, and then if it doesn't work, you've got something to make them, make it work. Otherwise, they'll never do anything. Otherwise, they'll never do anything because all the minutes and the notes they read back, you will see how the township for many years tried to get them to use up, and they did not do it. And if you need the notes to refresh your mind, I have them for you because I have the emails that Randy used to send, the township and the township manager, Steve Weisner. They all sent us these things. We're trying to get them. We're trying to get them to do, and they won't. If you remove anything over their head, you have nothing to negotiate with them because they can sit and laugh at you.
I would just underscore what I said earlier. What you have currently, the court does not have jurisdiction over the matter. Our recommendation here with the settlement stipulation has the court maintaining jurisdiction, meaning if there's a violation, they would not only be violating the stipulation, they'd be violating a court order.
You know, we, we, we evacuate people who are our supervisors.
Right.
And there's elections coming. So maybe there should be changes if people don't want to speak up and stand up. I want to know what is the reason why the rush to go back and remove everything without seeing if it works?
I don't think eight years of this is a rush. I believe that we've tried everything. For once now, the jurisdiction is going to lie with the court. There will be no more accusations of being owned by Wawa or Savona this or Savona that. No more will this board get to decide whether or not they're in compliance. A judge who would not have those concerns that you have about the board and the township would then be in charge of deciding...
Well, the township's going to have to take it to the court, isn't it? I mean, because it's in the township. I mean, who's going to take it to court? Residents aren't. You can't push that on the residents.
When they're, what happens when they're not in compliance?
When they're not in compliance, the first line of defense is that the observer will report it to Wawa. And to the extent that it's been...
Now, we're going to report to the township, too. Because I...
I would very much appreciate if you did that.
Right now.
And to the extent that...
No, wait. You're pushing it on us, and you didn't want our input for anything. So at the very end, don't make a decision without consulting us, involving us. You should involve us if you want to consult us and tell it's going to be up to our shoulders.
Ma'am, thank you.
Ma'am, no, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate your comments.
But answer my question. Why is the rush?
Why? Because I would rather have our cops out getting people who are dealing drugs or traffic accidents and sitting back on Orchard Road trying to see it three inches of truck over our fence.
It's not the cops' job.
So I am asking, if you could, please, if you see somebody not applying to it, call the number. If they fail to act, then we will act. And we will no longer be the judges of it. Nobody who sits on this board will be a judge of it. The judge alone will make the decision. And they can immediately take action on Wawa, something that we cannot do. That is why.
All right. Then just tell me, what does this do to adjust the fact that nothing over the height of the fence will be seen? What is, anything you're passing tonight do? Nothing. We did striping. We did signs before. They have signs there, no trucks, and they still go down. Just the other day, FedEx went down. I mean, they're not listening. So what are they going, they didn't listen before. That's why they got to the height bars. The height bars were not an initial thing. It was because they tried everything and it didn't work. Now, we're going back to the old stuff of doing nothing. This is what Wawa wants to do. But what are you doing to stop the height? And if so, are not the height bars and the rest of the township a little bit dangerous? And also with safety? I have a question with safety. How come you do not address the kids that ride bikes and the people that walk down there with the cars and trucks?
All right. We're done. We're done. I'm ending this line of questioning right now.
Because you don't want to address the question.
No, because this is, this is a public meeting to get business done. This is not the LM hour.
You kept telling us when it came up on the agenda, we could talk.
So we are done. You can talk, and I have allowed you to talk at length.
I want a question answered, though, for the safety of the kids walking.
Because I will allow the police officers to decide how to handle those situations of public safety.
The police don't handle that.
Yes, they do. Our cops do an excellent job. I'll stand up for everything they say.
Excuse me. They have told us they do not handle that. That's private property.
The kids on the bikes.
Am I correct with that?
Ms. LM.
On the private property? You handle the driveway and parking lot?
Ms. LM, I was speaking...
Well, he's the one that told me that they didn't...
Ms. LM, I was speaking about the children on the bikes. I was not speaking of the, of Wawa.
Well, that's a safety issue.
And it is. And I will allow the people who are in charge of safety in the township to decide how to handle it. I'm not going to sit here. I'm not a cop. I don't, I'm not ever going to tell them.
It's not the cops' problem.
Kids on the street riding bikes?
No, riding up the access road, which is a private drive that you're talking about with the trucks. It is on that drive, not on a public, I don't talk in anything public roads.
Right.
I'm talking about...
So the complaint now is that the children are riding the bikes on the access road behind Wawa.
Well, no. I said, what are they doing? Well, I brought this up before about it. So it's not a thing, even when they were doing it in the beginning. But it was always overlooked by everybody until somebody gets hit or a walker gets hit. But now that you're going to open it up for trucks to go down there, because basically that's what you're doing.
We disagree. This is what it pulls into. We have a disagreement. This board has decided to go in this direction. You disagree with it. You mentioned there's recourse you can take.
Well, then, when you do, do you then, because they got the buffer zone with the fact that they were not going to have anything over five feet, they would have green area, it's not, it's the road, they put the road right up against the fence, they didn't do anything that they said, then they moved the fence three feet more because they had said they had to have three feet, and we've got the letter, rather than the retention basin was in the way, rather than move that, we just move the fence and move over and take more property. It was, everything was permitted. Why do they get away with everything?
They do not get away with everything. I take great exception with your constant belittling of this administration and what they've done over the past nine years. They've done their best. I agree with the course we're taking tonight.
It's fine. But you did not address it. You've dropped it under the rug.
I disagree with you. I do absolutely entirely that opinion.
Then just explain to me what is going, one thing. Explain. What is going to stop tall trucks going down?
Math. Math is going to stop it. Because if it's 6,000 pounds or 20 feet long, it literally cannot be that high. If it's too high, it's going to tip over. That's, it's math.
What about the fellow that has the lawnmower and has a trailer on the back and wants to put gas in the...
But we can't write laws to, for certain exceptions. I would be shocked, though, if they, if they had that height on it. But the fact of the matter is, for every rule we can set, there will always, somebody will always find an exception. There will be somebody who tries, who puts something on top of their truck, and all of a sudden, if they put a Domino's sign on top of it, that could, we can't, we have to pass laws so they're not just going for minor exceptions.
But then what are we going to do after? What do you have to hold over them? When you take it all off, what do you have to hold over them when in a year that they do not come back and they, you have, I've got pictures right now of FedEx, I've got box trucks going down there. What are you going to do? Or just go turn your head and say, oh, too bad?
No, because then we could take it back to the courts, and the judge can take immediate action. Something we cannot do. All we can do is take it to...
But it's not going to stop it if you take away everything. You had, the court, the judge before thought it was well enough to put that in. So why now? Because Wawa didn't like it, or you're taking it down?
We believe, we believe this judge, we believe this deal will give us what we're looking for. Is that correct?
It does not stop the height.
It's correct.
I disagree.
And I want an answer, sir. Why would we, with all due respect to you, why would we appeal something that we agree with?
Two things. The amended stipulation will be presented to the court for the court's approval of it. It will then become a court order. Okay?
This was a court order that you had here before.
The difference being, ma'am, you're asking, you've asked two questions. Please let me answer them. Please let me answer the two questions. This court order has a provision in it that in addition to the stipulation becoming a court order, the court will maintain jurisdiction. That is different than the last time. That was not in the last order. I'm putting it in the order this time. That is going to be...